We'll now call this regular workshop meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. First off, we have the adoption of the proposed agenda, and I would ask that in your motion, you move item number eight, which is application and acceptance of FY 2021 Burn Grant to the non-consent in your motion.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion seconded. Any further discussion here? None? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have the adoption of the minutes and consent items. That'd be one through seven, and the minutes from the June 22nd, 2021, regular meeting.
Move approval for the minutes from the June 22nd, regular council meeting and the consent items?
Second. There's a second. Any further discussion here? None? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. So we'll get, we'll jump right here to this item number eight, which is a request of, this is a request for application and acceptance of the FY 2021 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant. And Mike, you know, Chief Mike Inar will be presenting this item. Chief.
Mayor, council, appreciate the opportunity to talk about the JAG grant. The JAG grant's changed a little bit with its justice assistance grant, and what they've done is they've determined that the grant funding should be between a city and the county, between cities and counties. So if you can remember, the JAG grant, we've gotten that over a period of years, probably since the mayor was on, on the police department. And it was a formula grant that was just given to the city to help law enforcement purposes. So it's been used for a number of different things over the years. So to encourage collaboration, this particular grant is going to be a partnership between the city and the county, and we're going to use it for de-escalation.
This is Kathy Scheller.
We're going to use it for de-escalation, and that, that's going to be enhancing our ability to provide training to-
Pardon, I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Pardon me just a second.
To provide both city and county officers de-escalation training.
Hello?
So, hang on.
I think we have some technical difficulties.
So far, so good, though.
So the grant is about $36,000 between the city and the county's allocations, and it'll be used to, to upgrade some training software that we have. So like I said, I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you might have about the JAG grant.
Counsel. Questions?
Well, before you have a motion, John.
We're going to do a little public hearing on-
Or just ask if anyone, yes, Sergeant.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this matter? Sheriff, you want to add anything?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, we appreciate the cooperation that the city, police department, and the sheriff's office is doing for the people. And we believe also in de-escalation. De-escalation is training to reduce use of force, and basically, we have the same philosophy, the same common interest to take care of our people. And we will work with the county. I will present this grant to my county commissioners at an upcoming, coming meeting, and I think the future is good.
Thanks, Sheriff. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Okay, counsel, you asked, you're being asked to approve the accept, authorize the acceptance, application and acceptance of this grant award.
Move the city manager be authorized to apply for and accept the grant, execute application documents, and, and we have had public comment.
Second.
Any, any further discussion here? None? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Sheriff, for coming tonight. All right. Next on, we have on our workshop topics for tonight is the Metronet presentation, and I believe we have, we're going to do that via Zoom tonight, so. Ron's going to lead it on.
Hope that will be successful on that. The, I just wanted to let counsel know that we're going to hear from a representative from a company named Metronet. They're based in Indiana, and, and what their primary business is, is providing fiber to premises. So you, as a result, you get fiber-supported internet, phone, and television services, cable services in that. And, and of course, fiber, when you get internet access through fiber, you can get higher speeds, and their, their speeds are both a consistent up and download. So they offer, for example, one gigabyte up and down, and that, which is a significant benefit, especially to businesses. So it's really a good opportunity to support our businesses in our community, and it, it also ends up being another source of that service in our community. And so they're, they're basically, they serve over 100-
Well, good evening, Mayor Phillips, City Council.
Go ahead. This is Kelly, Kelly, Kelly's here, is a representative from Metronet, and we'll let Kelly go through her presentation.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Go ahead.
Thumbs up. Good evening, Mayor Phillips, City Council, and city staff. My name is Kathy Scheller, and I'm the Director of Government Relations for Metronet, a fiber-optic company that brings internet, voice, and video all over a direct fiber-optic connection to the home or business. We're the fastest-growing, independently-owned fiber-optic company in the nation, and we are very excited to be coming to Jacksonville this fall. This evening, I'm going to be sharing with you a brief presentation that will hopefully allow you to get to know our culture, who we are, and a brief overview of what it takes to install fiber optics in a community. We can go ahead and start the slide presentation afterward. If there are any additional questions, I would be glad to answer those. Who is Metronet? And Metronet, as I mentioned, is a fiber-optic company located in Evansville, Indiana. We were established in 2004, and we have currently grown exuberantly since our start in Indiana to over 120 communities across 11 states. We have a customer base of over 250,000 subscribers, and we have a passion for customer service, and the, but the big thing that we offer in internet speeds is symmetrical speeds, which means you can upload as fast as you download. You know, a lot of people wonder now, what, what, what does it mean, fiber versus cable? Fiber is the wave of the future. We know now more than ever what we've learned through COVID, people working from home, students learning from home, what we need as far as broadband speeds go. Fiber optics brings a great quality of life. It will allow you to work from home or be at home with the option of, the only devices on your strand of fiber are yours. That is why our speeds will hold. Future-proof, this is virtually unlimited capacity. Currently, Metronet offers a gig symmetrical to the home. As technology increases, all we will need to do in Jacksonville is change out equipment on both ends, and your residents and businesses alike will be able to access five gig, 10 gig. That's why we call it future-proof. It's the latest technology available. It's, it's, it's something that is the future, and it's future-proof. What are your fiber benefits? Some of these items I put together for you, Mayor and Council, are, were very interesting to me. If your home has the ability to have a direct gig connection to your home, that doesn't necessarily mean you have to, as a person, get that right now, but if you have a gig in front of your home that you can bring in, your home value immediately goes up by 3.1%. And you have exclusive access. Less than 20% at this time of all communities in the country have access to a true fiber connection. And what's great, too, is as, you know, as you know, what's great for your constituents is you want to be able to offer choice. And in Metronet coming in, it's good for competition. Currently, Metronet has the fastest internet available when we're, when we're measured in the communities that we serve over our peers. Metronet communities, these are things that we've seen across the board. They will, they will benefit from a high level of customer service. That has always been a niche for us when we come into new markets. When we are measured on our customer service, we're an average of 30% higher in our markets than our peers. What's great about our organization is we have broad availability. We don't just come into a city and build one or two neighborhoods. There's going to be plenty of neighborhoods and cities alike that will get all, broad availability of Metronet and the fiber. We have a local presence. We have local staff. We like to get involved in the communities we serve. We're very philanthropic, because I personally believe that that creates that win-win scenario. You get to know who we are, we get to know who you are. And again, this is superior fiber services. It's the best technology available. Symmetrical speeds are something that's extremely important. We've learned that as people work from home. That's something that's extremely important as well. I'm not seeing my presentation. Okay. What's really important for us is neighborhood communication. So let's say, when we come into a community, what we want to do is work the city staff in Jacksonville. We want to make sure that communities, your residents, understand who we are and what's going on with the fiber optic deployment. We have a very robust neighborhood communication plan. That neighborhood communication, communication plan will continue to evolve once we get started in the fall. We contact your residents directly. We have three points of contact. Before we ever go into their neighborhood, we send them a letter. After the letter, closer to the time of construction, we'll send them a bright green postcard that you see to the right of your screen. Finally, we will actually put a yard dart in there. All of these pieces of communication are directing your residents to an 800 number for Metronet. In addition, on these, these pieces of information that we send them, we're educating them about what a right-of-way is, who we are, what does our construction look like. All of this can be found also on our construction website. Your residents could go to the construction website, access it, click on Jacksonville, North Carolina, a map will pop up, and they'll be able to see exactly where we are in your community. They'll be able to ask questions, and they'll be able to watch videos. This is really important to us, and it's become something, since I've been with the organization for seven years, something that really sets us apart from the rest. We believe in transparent communication, and it's very important for us to do that. As I mentioned, customer service has been a niche for us, and we believe that starts from the construction phase. That 95% responsiveness represents, we're in 11 states, as I told you, our project director for Jacksonville will be included in this. 95% of our project directors respond back to people that call our 800 number or, or put a ticket in through our construction website within 24 hours. We believe that that's a way to let your residents know that they've been heard. This is just a sample of what a construction website ticket looks like. A lot of times, people might not want to go to the website and create their own ticket. If they call the 800 number, a ticket will be created for them. This is really important, because this shows measurement. Every month, we'll be having meetings with members of city staff and letting them know not only how much fiber was deployed in Jacksonville during that month, but also the nature of the tickets that were sent to us. Were they about, just questions about installation? When can I get Metronet? Was it restoration? Anything that comes through in Jacksonville in any given month will be shared with staff, whereby they can make a report to council regarding our construction process. Restoration is key whenever you go through an infrastructure project of this magnitude. We restore as we go, so if there are any areas that are underground that we need to restore, we restore that within 24 to 48 hours. We're very, that's very important to us, because we realize the importance of keeping our potential customers' yards in, in a good way. And again, they can always go to the construction website, take pictures, submit those to us just so we can have a better look. We can always document any questions or concerns with restoration, and our project managers will take care of that. Again, I cannot overemphasize that responsiveness, 95% plus. When we come into a community, what is our go-to-market plan? We have a complete process on how we let residents know when it's time for them to sign up. Quite frankly, once they are on our construction website, which will be coming soon, they can go in and ask, type in their address and ask when Metronet's going to be in their neighborhood. They also have the opportunity, through the website, to go ahead and sign up early. Otherwise, what we believe in is what we call consultative sales. Consultative sales include us getting involved in HOAs, neighborhood events. We have people that go, you know, knock and, and work with people as we're, as we're building. Usually, residents know when it's a time to sign up, because we follow construction. We will not build the entire city of Jacksonville and then light up the city. We will go neighborhood by neighborhood and light them up accordingly. People can always go to our website, where we highlight our products and services. What's great for residents is that there is absolutely no long-term contracts. So if a person comes in, our lowest offering is 100 meg symmetrical. Our highest, as I mentioned earlier, is a gig symmetrical. If a resident comes in and starts at 100 meg and wants to change their mind and go to a gig, they can do so. It's very, very simple, because we don't have any of those contracts. In addition, that's a testament, personally, that I believe to our organization, we do not have any long-term contracts, because we're so confident in this infrastructure and our customer service that we, you know, we don't lose people once they come onto fiber. But what's good to know is no one is locked in to our organization. And again, customer service is key. We look forward to, again, coming into Jacksonville, working with the community philanthropically, getting to know them, getting to know all of you, our neighbors. What's really great is the economic development impact of this. We will be hiring associates, we're hiring business reps, we'll be hiring a market manager. A lot of this impacts all of the communities that we go into, and we're proud of that, being a part of it. I would be amiss if I didn't put some information on some of the things that, results-driven achievements we've had over the, over since our inception. We're, we're really ranked in the nation, and as I mentioned, we're the fastest-growing, independently-owned fiber-optic company in the nation, and we're really excited to becoming into Jacksonville. Now, unfortunately, hopefully you can still hear me, because I have no, for some reason, I'm not able to pick up your audio. So I would get, have any questions, I'm not sure if your staff wants to type them into me, should there be any questions, but again, this has been, I will give you this, this has been one of the most challenging virtual meetings I've ever done, not being able to hear anything. But I just want to let you know, the sentiment, hopefully you can hear me, of our organization, we're really thrilled to come in, and I know the impact that we will make to your residents and businesses alike.
Do you want to send?
For counsel's information, we're scheduled to have a pre-construction conference tomorrow with representatives from Metronet.
And they're anticipating actually beginning construction of the community when?
I don't, I won't be able to tell you that till tomorrow, but they're, you know, they're trying to line up everything, and hopefully, I want to say, they were originally targeting for October, and we'll, we'll see, you know, whether that date's still good. I know they're having some challenges getting some of the crews they needed when, up in the Greenville area. One thing, there are other cities in North Carolina that are working. They started in Fayetteville in the beginning of this year. They're in Greenville now. They're going to do New Bern and Jacksonville in the same timeframe. Matter of fact, the same site manager is going to manage both the construction in both, both cities. They've also scheduled to go into Hickory. So they're, they're really expanding their, their footprint in North Carolina, and that's a good opportunity for the city. I think it's really good for our businesses that, we know, for example, out in Burton Park, not that they're going to be out in Burton Park in, anytime soon, but one of the businesses in Burton Park is, is struggling because of the level of internet access that they have, and that, and that's not a good thing for any of our businesses.
Petition aspect of it's a good thing, too, so.
What role, Ron, if any, do we play in this?
The, they, what they really want us to help with is, is expedite their approval of their encroachment agreements. Generally, you know, they, they have a right, because they are permitted or licensed in the state, to basically put their infrastructure in, in the right-of-way. But what they want is they want to get quick turnaround, and, and we're concerned, too, that we don't want to have to double-locate, in other words, locate and then have it expire and that. And so that's one of the things that we'll coordinate with them tomorrow. We've had some, some interchange with representatives of the company about how our process works, and we, and we just need to, if they give us information in the format that we want it, then we will turn it around quickly. But we, we have had monthly calls with some of the other cities that are, that are working with Metronet, and, and really, other than Metronet's problem of getting enough contractors that are properly qualified, you know, the, the feedback that we've gotten from, from our partner cities is that it's been a, a good process, and, and-
They're not asking, they're not asking counsel for anything.
No. And we've alerted them the fact that, you know, if they want to put up an antenna, there's a process that we have. It's got to meet the planning and zoning requirements and that. So, I mean, we've tried to say, we're, we're here, ready to work with you, but we need information for us to be able to do our job and that. So we've shared that information with them, and, and we'll now get to see who our partners will be when we have a pre-construction meeting, and we'll actually get more of the staff connected to their counterparts in the company.
What areas of town will they be starting personnel in?
I, I do not know. Obviously, they're, they're going to, you know, get, get to the higher-density areas first, where they see, you know, their, their maximum business opportunity. So I, I expect those will be the areas that, that they go to first, and then, then they can expand from there. You know, I do know that their, their kind of main feed is basically along Highway 17. So that's where I think they'll connect to their connection to the internet, and, and then work out from there in the city.
Aye.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation, and-
Thank you.
We'll pass it on to Kelly. Thank you, Kathy, for this.
For the next presentation, we need to have several of us step down so that the presenters can be here, so give us just a moment, please.
And this will be a child abuse task force. For being with us tonight, and looking forward to hear what you have to say.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I guess it's been around two years ago, we talked about the challenges that the city has been seeing with child abuse and neglect cases. Just to talk a little bit about what child abuse is, is, you know, when we talk about child abuse, we talk about all types of child abuse. Mostly what people think about as child abuse is child sexual abuse, but we also talk about physical abuse, mental abuse, all those things that impact children as they grow up. And over the last several years, we've seen a 44% increase in child victimization inside the city, and we've seen a 28% increase in child abuse neglect. I kind of saw those statistics a number of years ago, we talked about those. But one of the things that we did is we started to talk about how we approach child abuse and how we can prevent it from happening. So, so we have a, our child abuse, our members of our child abuse task force that are present, and we're going to really talk about what the child abuse task force is, is doing, and we're also going to talk about what we need to do in order to eliminate child abuse. And I'll, I'll introduce the members. Anne Marie Raymond from One Place, Don Rochelle from One Place, Tondrea Leach, who's, runs the, the Child Abuse Task Force, Carrie Sanders, the Director of DSS, and then Sheriff Miller. So I'd like to turn it over to, to Carrie, just for a minute, to let her talk more globally about these. These are just the cases that we're talking about right here, are only cases that, that the city has, has been reported to the city police. And when we talk about COVID and we talk about school closures, what we've seen is, or what we're going to see, is an increase. So Carrie?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. So Onslow County Department of Social Services is required by law to provide protective services to all children that are alleged to be abused, neglected, or dependent. This includes the screening of child protective services reports, the assessing of children and families when the report is actually accepted for an assessment or an investigation, and then providing ongoing services to families and children when the department has found abuse, neglect, or dependency. So Onslow County DSS receives approximately 3,000 child protective services reports every fiscal year. We average accepting about 62 to 65% of all those reports. That really equates to, during last fiscal year, excuse me, we accepted 1,800 child protective services reports and assessed over 3,692 children and families. So law enforcement and court personnel are one of our largest reporters of accepted reports of child abuse and neglect. They were at about 21% of all accepted reports. Last fiscal year, we really saw a dramatic decrease in child abuse and neglect reports, specifically during the months of November through January, I think when COVID was really at its worst. However, we have more than made up for that through the end of fiscal year 2021. We only accepted 100, 100 less reports than in the previous fiscal year. So of all the reports that we accept, we average between 15 and 18% of those reports are accepted for serious abuse, like physical abuse, sexual abuse, or serious neglect. The long-term impacts of COVID-19 are really yet to be known, but what we do know is the social isolation with children and families, we believe are going to have long-term impacts on children and families. With the school closures, you know, that, our schools is typically a safe place for children to be during the day, gives the parents the break. We know that they are, they're going to get two meals per day, and that didn't happen when our schools were closed. And we also know that there was missed opportunities to intervene with families earlier, to get ahead of it, to be more preventative with services with children and families versus being reactive, and at the point where the abuse or neglect is so severe. What we've also seen at the department is an increase in the severity of abuse and neglect. Because of the social isolation, children and families were not seen about as much during COVID. So by the time our department got- So by the time our department got involved, the severity, which was much more, it was just much more severe, abuse and neglect. We've also seen the number of children coming into foster care dramatically increase. During fiscal year 1920, our department assumed custody of 53 children. In fiscal year 2021, we assumed custody of 113 children. That's over 100% increase. And one of the very unfortunate things in our community right now is that we do not have a lot of foster parents within our community. Right now, I have 40 licensed foster homes through our department. Now, there's private agencies that also license, but our department has 40 licensed foster homes. We are consistently doing outreach and trying to license more families to be foster parents. So we have a lot of our children that are residents of Onslow County that are placed outside of our county and getting services outside of our county because we do not have enough foster homes. We've also seen an increase in the number of cases that we provide ongoing services, and those are the families where the children have remained in the home. We have found abuse or neglect, but we are trying to increase safety of the children and reduce risk to the children. So we're providing intensive, ongoing services to those families, and we've seen an increase in the numbers of those. Over the last two fiscal years, we've seen a 13% increase in the number of those cases. So child abuse and neglect is really a community issue. It is a community problem. It's not something that can be fixed by one department or one entity. It really has to be a community effort, and we must work in collaboration to truly have an impact on reducing child abuse and neglect in our county.
Thank you, Carrie. So one of the things that we've been looking at is ACEs, and those are adverse childhood experiences. So there's three basic kinds. There's abuse, neglect, and household dysfunction. And the problem with ACEs is they lead to mental health problems, they lead to substance abuse, they lead to behavior issues. And as we look at what ACEs are, those adverse childhood experiences, the more of these ACEs that we have, the more problems that we develop in our, as adults. And so one of the things that we're going to talk about is TASCO. And Tondrea, I'll turn it over to you, and she'll talk a little bit about the task force experience that we've developed.
Hey, everyone. I'm Tondrea Leach from Pierce Family Development Center, and we are just happy that we can be a part of such an integral network of people in Jacksonville and Onslow County. Because before we come together, we were all just in our own little silos working. So TASCO stands for Turning, I'm sorry, Turning Adversity Into Success for Children in Onslow. And we have worked together to build our mission statement, to build a safe, stable nurturing relationships and environments for children in Jacksonville and Onslow County communities in order to prevent abuse and neglect. We have moved from this mentality of only serving our families in our own agencies. We've had medical, we've had law enforcement, we've had government entities, we've had nonprofits, all come to the table since 2018, coming to the table to say, what can we do to reduce child abuse and neglect in Onslow County? When we work individually, we may be serving one family, but we're not serving all those needs. When we're working together, we're able to coordinate services for our families, and we're able to bring everybody to the table and able to get the services that our families are needing to help prevent and also intervene when need to be when it comes to child abuse and neglect. We have been disrupted through two hurricanes and a pandemic, but that has not stopped the task force members. I want you to know, we've had up to 60 members that have come to the table. We have over 20 agencies, over 30 agencies who are serving on the task force currently. We've been able to provide our Community Prevention Action Plan, and we just released that in April, and we are very excited that we were able to do that within two years of starting this task force. And we appreciate the fact that the city council keeps bringing this notion back so that they can continue getting reports on child abuse and neglect, because we do, just like Ms. Carrie said, we have to work together in order to make a difference.
So I think one of the things that's really important is, from our standpoint, from the police standpoint, is our partnership with the Child Advocacy Center. And I'll turn it over to Dawn Rochelle, and she can talk a little bit about the need to expand those services in our community.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Phillips, council members, Dr. Woodruff and staff. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity this evening to continue the conversation that all of you have been such a strong voice in. At One Place, we work to ensure that our most vulnerable population, our children, are counted in our community and have the resources that they need to feel safe and ultimately to have a happy childhood. We know that in all that we do, we have a critical impact on force readiness. The Council for a Strong America reflects what we already know. The number-one national security issue for our country is the readiness of our citizens to serve in our society and our military, and that includes our children. Early years are learning years, and it is essential for families, for employers, our workforce, and our economy. Why this is so important now is that when we look at child abuse, we see the effects on the development of brain architecture. Brain architecture with all of the wiring provides the foundation for all future learning, behavior, and health. Just as a weak foundation compromises the quality and strength of a house, adverse childhood experiences early in life can impair brain architecture, and negative effects will last an entire lifetime. Because childhood abuse, neglect, and trauma changes that brain structure and chemical function, effects can also be seen in the way children behave, the way they regulate emotions, and function socially. And just as Carrie mentioned, our schools being closed has had a direct impact on a lot of observations that would typically happen. Adverse childhood experiences can literally change the trajectory of someone's life if we do not have the ability to provide the supports and the interventions needed. Far too, far few troubled children get the help that they need to become protective students and citizens. Despite all of the efforts and all of the resources that we had, it takes a coordinated effort, and when we have a pandemic and hurricanes, it can easily be disrupted. So we are changing that with your help and your investments in our work. With positive supports and mental health resources, we can rewire the brain and overcome adversity. Since opening the Child Advocacy Center in 2009 with many of you at the table, we have now seen almost 3,000 children to date. For coordinated medical and forensic exams, we do see the most severe cases in the community in support of the efforts of the Department of Social Services and all law enforcement agencies in the community. What has not happened consistently are the mental health services, despite the efforts of therapists in our community that are willing to see children. With the divestiture of mental health in North Carolina, just as all over the country, we have lost services for those most in need. Hurt children many times cannot be served in a billable hour with the coordinated supports that are needed. Mental health needs have continued to climb, just as the cycle of abuse and its very much related. And when one increases, so does the other. It spills into every corner of our community when we cannot serve timely and with expertise. One Place has now partnered with Bay Area Psychological Services to begin serving children seen by the Child Advocacy Center beginning in the next 30 days. We wish that we could serve all children because we know the long waits for appointments in this community due to there not being enough therapists to meet the demand. But our belief is that you start where you are with what you have when you can do it. So we will take a step forward. We all pay a steep price when we fail to support the healthy development of all children. This is not anything new. The way that this community is choosing to work together differently and more strategically as government, nonprofits, business, and philanthropy, we will change the life of children that we will never get to meet, that will have impact in ways that we will never see. Many communities need what we have here in collaboration, just as who sits at this table this evening. We share resources, and we have a genuine working together. This is not about us, it is about all of our children. This council, alongside others, know that these are not solutions that are able to always be achieved in an election cycle or a funding cycle. Sadly, we do have hurt children today. But with gratitude, we have this task force, working forward with engaged stakeholders. With gratitude, we have a strong collaborative effort with the Child Advocacy Center. And with gratitude to each of you for believing in our work, we will all be a part of the solution, and we will continue to seek to end a problem that is 100% preventable, which is child abuse. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the council. I mean, this effort started with the council and the county commission looking at child abuse and looking at it in a more strategic approach. But now I'd be glad to, or anybody on the, glad to entertain any questions that you might have.
Yeah, I'm glad to see collaboration, because sometimes I find that there's a lot of stuff that might, a lot of efforts aren't actually taken care of because everybody's so territorial. So, and that's how you prevent a lot of issues, because your eyes can't be everywhere. So you, it takes those partnerships. So I think that's a wonderful thing. That's a great start right there, you know? Actually, if there's an issue, like you have an organization or someone could come to you guys and you could kind of direct them into different areas, is that correct?
I think they can go to any of our partnering agencies. And if they just open up and tell us what's going on, each of our partners are going to say, we may not be able to serve you here, but here's the contact for you to go to this place. Or we maybe even, if, like, if they come to us, we open up our phones, we say, here you go, let's call them together, and we help them get to the points that they need to go to. And I think all of us do that collaboratively.
I have a question. It was mentioned that the foster homes here in Jacksonville and Onslow County are beginning to become very limited. Can you provide maybe the top three barriers that foster care homes are not readily available for these children?
Well, I think one of the biggest barriers is that it takes a special person to want to be a foster parent, to actually want to bring in a child that you did not raise and care for them as your own. And that is what is expected as foster parents. Foster parents are required to go through intensive training to become licensed. We have to make home visits, we have to assess their home. There's multiple requirements to become a licensed foster home. So I think that's one of the biggest barriers. I think also it takes, on average, someone who's thinking about wanting to foster, they say it takes, on average, seven times, usually around the seventh time, if they're really serious about wanting to foster, that's when they'll make the step to call our agency or a private agency to start that process. We have families that start the process, and they get into the training and into the classes, and then they say, this isn't for me. And that's okay, because we don't want foster parents that aren't fully invested in it. So I think that's another issue. And a lot of foster parents want to foster babies. And our largest portion of children in foster care is zero to five, but we also have a large portion of six-to-12 and 13-to-17-year-olds. And we even foster children that are young adults that are 18 to 21 to help them get a start up. So a lot of times, it's those pieces as well.
And I have one more question. I believe Chief Unarrow provided the data about how the cases of child abuse is spiking, it goes up and down and is cyclical. And it was also discussed, pretty much abuse can range from anything, from neglect to severely abused, but does the advocacy center have something like a child abuse fatality board that when death occurs by child abuse, that there are certain mechanisms that's put in place to keep those numbers low? And is Onslow County one of those counties where the fatality by child abuse is something that's exponentially growing?
Counsel, Ms. Washington, we are one, when something comes to our attention through DSS or through citizens' reports, we independently investigate, and obviously, child fatalities are the worst of the worst. But the different types of abuse, sexual abuse, psychological abuse, physical abuse, child neglect, all those things are being investigated. When it comes to child fatalities, we take that very seriously. We work with the city, again, with our special victims unit. We want to find out why it happened. But I think our vision, our joint vision, is to reduce and to make it go away. And we have a very transient population. People come from all over the country, and they, you know, military population, and sometimes they move away. So our challenge is to educate our young parents and let them know, let's break the cycle of abuse, you know? Spend more time with their children and all that. We can work with a religious community as well to let them know, because they have a captive audience where they can help us with that as well. So, yes, we take it very seriously, and we want it to go away.
We do have a team. It's another community team, and it's called the Community Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team that meets monthly. And that is, it's actually the responsibility of Department of Social Services, but we've merged those teams. And we have a huge community task force that reviews every child fatality in the community. And then we also have special reviews when DSS is involved. And within a year of a child fatality, that the state comes down and does fatality reviews, really focusing on what we can do differently and what gaps in services there are to help prevent more fatalities.
We actually modeled the opioid fatality review team after the child fatality review team that we've been.
I would just add, in addition to that, we also have a multidisciplinary team that meets as part of the Child Advocacy Center services. So those children that have been exposed to child sexual abuse and severe physical abuse, there's an additional review that is done if they come through our doors, and they're followed all the way until case resolution and then passed.
Other questions? Well, thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you for what you do in our community and trying to protect our children. Thank you very much.
[inaudible]
Next, we're going to talk a little bit about the Welcome Center we were talking about earlier with the TDA.
Counsel, you will, let's start that completely over. First of all, welcome back from your summer break. The property which you purchased as the old Exxon station has been thoroughly reviewed by the city staff. In order to operate it, even as a temporary welcome center, we're looking at well over $100,000 worth of improvements. The building is simply too small. The wing of the building or area of the building that is closest to 17 is in the worst shape. The bathrooms are just simply not acceptable, and the structural components on that side, likewise, it's just, you're going to have to spend a lot of money. Your options, we believe, would be best suited to just go ahead and tear that building down. And what we're asking this evening is not direction about And what we're asking this evening is not direction about necessarily where you're going to build your new one, but we cannot tear that building down without your approval. So what we're asking, and the recommendation from the building department and from the architect that looked at it, was unless you're willing to put in $100,000 to $125,000 on the building that you most likely are going to eventually tear down, the best step is to go ahead and tear it down. So we're asking you that. On the larger perspective, you'll notice in the discussion that we had with the TDA, we're recommending you place that on hold. Why? Several years ago, we went all the way through the architectural plans and getting bids, not to build a welcome center on this site, but to build a welcome center on a small parcel that is part of Jacksonville Landing. The bid came in at $447,000 for a building that was only 1,900 to 2,000 square feet. And at that time, the city council said, that is just way too much money for what you would be getting. We also would recommend that until you make decisions about some other things that we'll be talking about in the closed session tonight and other capital projects, that in addition to asking you to authorize us to tear the building down, that you authorize us to simply place that project on hold. As with anything, there is only so much money. And if you decide that your priorities are in one area, that's where the money will be focused on to your direction. If, on the other hand, you believe that a welcome center is the highest priority for these type things, then certainly you can give us that direction at that time. Can we answer any questions? But specifically, we're asking tonight to authorize us two things. Number one, authorize that within the next 60 days, we proceed to tear that down, and that number two, that you place the project on hold until you have further information on other projects.
Questions?
I go by there quite often and noticed it is being utilized somewhat by parking rights, I think probably more than we do over at the Commons. But anyway, that's consistent. What happens to all the stuff on the building and everything? Is everything discarded? Is anything recycled?
No, the air conditioning units that are on the top, we will take them down, and we will recycle them if they apply to certain city buildings. The other part is there are materials in the building that we, such as the metal components, that we will simply send, separate, and we will send to a recycling center, and we will get some reimbursement for that. The basic construction material, we would not get. It is our plan, though, to leave the concrete slab exactly as it is, and the reason why is by doing that, you're definitely grandfathering in issues regarding impervious surface for water management in a future building.
Would it be one of the projects, or is it too great a scope that we would do on our own?
Oh, we plan on doing this on our own. Yes, sir. Every bit of this will be done by facility maintenance and the street department. There will be, you know, I would estimate that at the end of the day, we're probably going to spend about $7,000 to $8,000 on the disposal at the landfill, because we do have to pay the $57 a ton. But at this point, leaving the concrete slab will reduce that cost, but you're correct, Mr. Thomas, city crews will be the ones doing this work.
That's great.
Those are already taken care of?
Yes, sir. Before we bought the property, the city attorney assured the council that the site was environmentally complete, and that there are no contaminations, and that all the wells and any contaminated soil, and there was some contaminated soil, all of that was removed by the contractor of the previous owner.
And there's issues with asbestos abatement with that building, is there?
We will have to abate the abatement if, we will have to abate the asbestos, and if I'm not mistaken, that has already occurred.
Do you need any direction on this?
Yes, please.
I'd make a motion that we authorize the city to go ahead and tear down the existing building, and then to place the discussion of a new building on hold until some things become a little clearer.
Motion seconded, pending discussion. Here are none, all in favor, signify by a 5%. Aye. All opposed.
Thank you.
That's the end of the workshop projects. I do have a couple of reports to make. The screen, very proud to announce that for his outstanding and meritorious service with the United States Marine Corps and in his community, Colonel Grover C. Lewis III has been nominated by his peers and accepted for induction into the National United States Veterans Hall of Fame. The mission of the U.S. Veterans Hall of Fame is to pay public tribute to the men and women of prior military service who exemplify great character and service. Colonel Lewis is presently employed with the Jacksonville Police Department as the accreditation manager.
With that, I'm going to stand.
The 2021 Clean and Green Star Award winners, we have the Jacksonville Environmental Appearance and Advisory Committee has selected the 2021 Clean and Green Star Award winners, which recognizes commercial and residential sites with outstanding visual appearance that advances the spirit of the clean and green in the community. The winner for the residential category is 210 Longacre Drive. It's a residence owned by Esther Barone, or Baron. Very nice. In the commercial category, there was a tie, and those winners are the State Employees' Credit Union located at 114 North Plain Road and El Sero Grande Restaurant at 505 North Marine Boulevard. Congratulations to those two businesses for keeping up the beautification and appearance of Jacksonville. Let's give them an applause. And at this time, I would entertain, you have one city moment other than those? We do.
Yes, sir. I'd like to remind everyone that National Night Out occurred last night, but not here. Due to the rain, it was postponed till tomorrow night, so Thursday of this week, as in right now, 24 hours away, you will be down at the Riverwalk Park. We expect to have excellent weather. Weather should break by early morning, so we expect to have a great turnout. And I remind everybody, this is an opportunity for you to actually get to know police officers, law enforcement people. We have a broad spectrum of law enforcement people there. Catalyst Church will be there with the things that they do with the young people, and the evening will end with a great fireworks activity. So we encourage everybody, it begins at 5:00. Parking is limited in the downtown area. You can certainly get free ridership on the city's transit system. I would encourage you to come down to Court Street, right there in the area of the Center for Public Safety and the Sheriff's Department. There's a large parking lot there for about 250 cars. We've encouraged people to come there, there's transit. Likewise, people can come right here to City Hall, there'll be transit buses that will be working from here, and I believe around the other location is the community, the junior high school down the street.
No, it should be at the Consolidated Human Services.
Okay, the Consolidated Human Services on college. And you can tell how old I am, because I called it a junior high school.
I would entertain a motion this time to go into closed session for the purpose of instructing staff in regards to negotiating property acquisition.
The move.
Okay. A motion seconded, any discussion here, none, all in favor, signify by a 5%. Aye. All opposed.